Who's that talking?
Are we, can you hear me? Loud and clear. Well, first of all, I want to thank you all for coming this evening. Welcome. On a Wednesday evening, we've had some questions about what this evening would be about and would be like. And so we want to thank you for coming out and we have people participating online. If you can hear me online, I see Jane there. Jane, you can wave and let me know you can hear me. No one's waving. I think we have about seventeen to twenty participants who are zooming into this conversation. So we want to welcome them as well. I want to open with a word of prayer this evening, and then we're going to go into a couple of logistics around opportunity for questions and answers and microphones and how we're going to work that. So if you would join me in a word of prayer, and then we'll do some logistics. And then an introduction about what brings us to this place this evening. And then we'll go from there. Let's pray. God, it is so good to be together this evening in your house. It's so good, God, to gather in the middle of the week and rejoice in your faithfulness. It's so good, God, to know that you are faithful. For this evening, we pause in just this moment to say thank you. Thank you for your goodness, your faithfulness, God, your love, your mercy, and your grace. We come together this evening, Lord, excited about how it is you have spoken in these many months of pandemic and this many months of difficulty, God, you have been leading and guiding. You have been actively at work in the life of your people. And we thank you for that, and we thank you for this evening. And God, ask that you would bless this time. That God, according to your will, you would help us see the vision that you are casting before us as your people at Beulah United Methodist Church. Thank you for each person who has come, who have gathered via Zoom. God, I pray that you are blessed now. We thank you, and we ask our prayer in Christ holy name. Amen. Just a couple of words around logistics. As you note, there are microphones positioned through in the sanctuary. And so we're going to ask that if you do have a question, hopefully you can jot that question down on the notepad or remember that. And at the end of the presentation time, we're going to have a time for questions to be asked and hopefully answers provided for those questions. So that would help us to be able to move through our presentation without interruption. But we want to give you plenty of time for conversation after the presentation. So some of the presentation will be provided for us on the screens to your left and right through a slideshow. And then afterwards, as I said, we'll have time. So we would invite you during that time to move to the microphones with your questions. If you are participating online, Gabe Higgins will be facilitating any questions for those who are participating online. So if you are a Zoom in this evening, if you have questions, you can chat those to Gabe, and he will ask those on your behalf, and we will answer those as those questions come to us. So before we begin, does anyone have any questions around those logistics? How many of you have a question about why it is we're gathering this evening? Not many have questions as to why it is we're gathering? Well, the reason we're gathering this evening is, as you all know very well, we have had, what can best be described, is a very difficult year. A difficult year for us individually and personally in our own homes. A difficult year for us corporately and in community as a church. It has been a difficult year for your pastors and staff as we've had to reimagine what ministry looks like, how it is that we worship. You all have been incredibly flexible. I think a word that describes us this year has been nimble. We have been nimble and willing to change and adapt. We have been adapting in many ways and reimagining all sorts and kinds of ministries. And I'm thankful. We, John and I and our staff have heard lots of thank yous regarding our willingness to be adaptable and reimagine ministry. But thank you to the church family who has been just as faithful, who have continued to support your church and your tithe and your offering, who've been here when available, who haven't balked at any ideas but have been supportive of those ideas. So that has made this year just a little more tolerable as your pastors and staff. So thank you. A part of this journey through this year has been us intentional to understand how God is leading us as a church into the unknown. Part of a vision is also being mindful of what's in the rearview mirror. You know, where we've been in the past year, mindful of where we want to be. So important part of driving a car is you've got to be mindful of what's in front of you, but you also have to look in the rearview mirror and say, that's where we come from, and this is where we want to be. So part of this meeting this evening, or this meeting in total, is about both where we've been in the rearview mirror and where we want to be in our future in ministry together in community as a church, but also connecting with our community around the church. I want to share a scripture with you, and it's Proverbs 29:18. Where there is no vision, the people perish. Anybody heard that portion of scripture before? Where there is no vision, the people perish. And what that really means is when there is no God-intended purpose, people become astray. They lose their way. They get lost in the path of life. And so we want to be intentional about what our future looks like in a couple of specific areas. And that's what we're going to talk about this evening. So what is our pursuit and purpose looked like? What are we pursuing, and what is our purpose in that pursuit? So we, as your pastors and staff, have been exploring practical ways to maximize our potential in growing together in our faith and leading others, both in the church and in the community, to understand, receive, and live into the incredible gift of God's amazing grace. After time spent in prayer and conversation, we believe that such an incredible plan is simple. A part of who we are in our ministry is that I believe we need to be practical in everything we do. What is the practical application of this pursuit, a vision that's before us? A simple plan is it begins with us, each one of us individually and each one of us corporately. It begins with our obedience to prayerfully identify where God is already at work. Meaning, this vision is not about us creating something new. This vision isn't about us wanting to create and plan for something that's way far out of the box. But it's looking at what God is already doing in our church and our community and joining in. It's obvious that God is at work all around us, and we want to faithfully pursue God's plan for the body of Christ at Beulah Church and our community. We believe that the pandemic and the on-hold mindset has offered us a unique opportunity to be equipped with a brand-new focus of hope, growth, and a spirit of thriving. So the reality of where we stand today is soon, and very soon, I hope, we hope, we're going to be a post-pandemic population of people. And if you listen to any kind of news recently, you'll know that there are hopes and dreams and plans that things will be somewhat normal by midsummer as vaccines are going up and the herd immunity is taking place. Hopefully, we'll be able to gather without restrictions safely. And so as we think about who we are as a post-pandemic, we want to reimagine Beulah from just surviving this pandemic to thriving in this post-pandemic season. How many of you would agree that we don't want to just survive, we want to thrive? And so surviving is not who we want to be. I think we can say, well, we survived the pandemic. No, we want to thrive in a post-pandemic environment. So what we want to offer you this evening is three intentional practices that we want to bring before the church and invite you to join us in what this vision for our future looks like in a post-pandemic reality. One around discipleship, one around worship, discipleship, and outreach. So what do we look like in worship? What do we look like in our discipleship journey together? What do we look like in outreach post-pandemic? So not just surviving that we've made it through the pandemic, but how are we thriving as a body of believers and a community of faith? So that's what brings us out this evening. And so as we go through this process of sharing what these three areas look like, there again, we want you to have questions. We want you to be able to ask those questions, and so we'll save those at the end, and we'll answer all the questions. So if you have questions already, some of you may have questions turning in your mind. I'd invite you to save those, and we're going to answer those together. So after that brief introduction, I want to invite Pastor John to come up, and we're going to start going through the slideshow presentation together.
Thanks, Beulah Church, for being here, both in person and those of you online. We appreciate just the time and energy that each of you have given to this church. So as Pastor Don highlighted, we have a need to reimagine that our world looks very different. We've gone through a global pandemic, which has changed the entire world. The entire world has been touched and shaped differently because of the last year and the ways we've had to change. This means that the church has looked differently, both globally and locally. You all know this well. You could retell how Beulah's story has changed over the last year from not being able to worship in person, only online, drive-in worship, online worship, to in-person worship and all sorts of varieties. It's changed worship, and that's true of almost every church around the globe. You probably have seen that, watched other live streams of other churches, have seen things that they're doing. We also know, as two years ago, on Beulah Day, we shared with you about how the demographics of this community around Beulah are changing. We know based on demographics that the majority of the population and the immediate vicinity around Beulah is African-American, Hispanic, and Asian. Now, most of our church is made up of white individuals. And so we have to take into account how our neighborhood is changing and how we can reach and connect better with our neighborhood and how we can bridge that gap. And then, of course, over the last year plus, and even on to the summer, there have been a number of transitions at Beulah. Sherry, our faithful music director, she retired. Myself, I'm taking a new appointment. Gabe is going to seminary. But we've also had new people join us, like Zach, as our new music director. Phil, who's in the booth with us to take on some media stuff. And whenever there's transitions, there's opportunity. And really, with the pandemic, it's been about opportunity. I heard Tom Berlin, who's pastor of the largest Methodist church in Virginia, and I've heard other pastors say this, but I heard him say it this week, that there will never be another opportunity like this in our lifetime. For the church, there will never be an opportunity like this to reimagine and to move forward and to try new ideas. And so with all of these transitions happening on a global level and on a local level, it's appropriate for us to begin to reimagine. One of the ways that we've reimagined, we've kind of have this image before you tonight. And many of you have seen the image that's been used under Pastor Don's leadership. Healthy leaders, healthy people, kind of that circular image many of you are familiar with. Well, this is kind of a reimagined look at it of how do we, as Beulah, be fully connected to Christ in our mind, body, heart, and soul? As individuals and as the church, how can we, as a church, have a healthy mind, healthy body, healthy heart, healthy soul, and so that we can continue to transform lives? So this is kind of the imagery that we've been using to help explain that. Then, as Pastor Don mentioned, there's a couple of focus areas that we want to highlight. Discipleship, online worship, but really worship as a whole, and then our outreach or community connections. I'm going to actually start with worship, and then I'm going to move back to discipleship. So raise your hand if you know how Beulah has changed during the pandemic according to worship. Right? Probably those of you on Zoom as well know that too. Our worship has changed. We've had to do things differently because of this pandemic. And so we know that we have an opportunity to kind of move forward and to adapt. And one of the biggest changes is about online worship and that connection there. Prior to the pandemic, we had been live streaming some of our services on Facebook. But once the pandemic hit, we had to revamp that and do that fully. And what we've come to realize prior to the pandemic and into the pandemic is that it's time to update our system, our technology. That our technology, I see Suzanne shaking her head in the back there. Yes, you can probably hear on some Sundays that there's a buzz. You can hear, I can hear it from up here, there's a buzz. Sometimes our microphones don't always work. There's a buzz and some feedback. And so what we need is a new digital soundboard. We have an analog soundboard that takes up about the entire length of the sound booth back there. A digital soundboard will allow us to have more flexibility, better sound, and more consistent sound because sometimes everything's working just fine, and then things happen. So we need some updates there. We also need new cameras. As many of you have noticed, right about where this microphone in front of me is, is where we have our Mevo camera. That's what gives an image out to the world to share our Beulah services. And while that's done an adequate job, just a fine job, the reality is we're limited by just that one camera. What we'd like to have is we'd like to have cameras mounted at the back on the back walls there to have a little bit more mobility and function so we can get a better picture, better image. During the pandemic, most of the Mevo has only been focused on one of two areas. But once we're able to have more music across the full scope of the sanctuary, the Mevo's probably not going to cut it. And then, of course, we've added Phil and some folk to help us with media to help with all of the needs because it's not just been our worship, but there's been so many other online components, whether it's the devotionals, whether it's the discipleship or other components where we've needed to connect online. What we know for certain is that online worship and online connections are going to be a part of the church's future forever, moving forward. How many of you would acknowledge and recognize that fact? And many of you have connected in those ways. And though for many of us, that's maybe not our preferred method of connection, I know that many of you will travel to the beach this summer. And when you travel to the beach this summer, you don't have to go to First United Methodist Church of Myrtle Beach. You can watch Beulah United Methodist Church online and connect during the week or whenever, when you're sick, when you're out of town. For those who are homebound, that is, many of them, it's their only way to connect to Beulah Church. For people who are friends and neighbors or people exploring a new church, the first place they're going to come is not in these doors, more than likely. The first place they're going to go is to an online service, either on Facebook, on YouTube. So our goal and our hope is to improve both the in-person and the online experience. By updating our equipment, by updating our needs, we'll be able to provide better in-person worship, but also better online worship, which will benefit the whole of the church. Every single person will benefit from that. It will also help us to connect better in the community. Of course, there are some funds that we need to raise for that. Pastor John could probably get into that more detailed. But that's a goal of ours, is knowing the importance of online connections and online worship is that the technology we have is not going to help us really move forward. It helps us to maintain, but it's not going to help us to thrive and move forward. So that's worship for us in a nutshell, and some of the improvements we need. Going back to discipleship, discipleship simply, in a word, is our journey with Jesus. It's our journey, our lifelong journey of growing in the goodness and the likeness of God. Jesus had twelve disciples, and we, as followers of Jesus, are disciples who are on a journey to grow like Jesus. What we've recognized during the pandemic is that there is a need for us to come together and have more enriched discipleship to help people grow more deeply in their faith. That the first place for many of us where we connect is worship. But where we see incredible transformation happen is often through discipleship, through Sunday School classes, through small groups, for the chance to sit down in a Bible study to talk about God's Word and to grow together. And so that's where we see incredible transformation happen, and this lifelong journey of knowing and loving God. So one of the ways that we want to help Beulah move forward is a cohesive discipleship plan, meaning that everybody's united and on the same page. You've probably started to see us do this throughout the pandemic, through all the book studies that we provided or the discipleship series that we've offered. And that goal is to get everybody learning and growing together. I know that there's been lots of discussions about some of the books that we've done, and I pray that you've shared that in whatever groups that you're a part of or friends across the church. And that's a chance to grow. So we want to continue to offer church-wide curriculum. As part of that, I just want to quickly mention that some of our Sunday schools have been meeting during the pandemic. But our goal and our hope, if you're a Sunday School leader, you know this because I've been in contact with you for the last few weeks, is that our hope is to allow all Sunday School classes to resume on May 30th. It's the last Sunday of this month. We're currently working with each Sunday School leader about that, opening up classrooms, preparing classrooms, getting curriculum together for those Sunday schools. So we are working on that, preparing for that. If you have questions about that, you can ask us, but I'd refer you first to your Sunday School leader because we've been in contact with them first. So be in touch with them about that. And part of this church-wide curriculum is that we are going to buy and offer every Sunday School class the kind of the curriculum that we are focusing on for our discipleship study. That way, the church has the opportunity to all be learning and growing in the same ways. Now, if a Sunday School class decides that they want to use a different curriculum, that is up to that Sunday School class and to that leader. But we are going to purchase the books for every group so that every person has the opportunity to learn and grow together. We're going to purchase leader guides for each of the leaders so that they can grow and learn together. And we're continuing to build up lay leaders so that more people can teach and grow together. We want to continue doing our Wednesday teachings. We've been doing that in various different ways throughout the pandemic. One of the ways that's worked very well for us is sort of the teachings that Pastor Don and I have done. We've done those video series. We've seen a lot of fruit come from that. We've tried this discipleship group on Facebook that I know some of you have been a part of as a way to connect. We've also had our Amplify resources, those videos that are directly from the author of the book, whether it's Adam Hamilton or Matthew Skinner or somebody else. And that's an opportunity to hear directly from them and have an incredible resource. We've been paying for that resource to share with others so that in this time, you can kind of use it on your own as you see fit. But essentially, it's just another way for us to help equip leaders, to help equip you, and to continue providing teaching opportunities. So our goal with discipleship is to simply have better discipleship, to have an actual plan, to have more unity, and to have more leaders who are better equipped to lead, who can say, you know what, I can step up and lead my class. Or I can step up and I can lead a video for the church. That's our goal, and Pastor Don and I are working on leading and working with some leaders right now to help equip people. But that's our goal because we know for discipleship to be its strongest is for the whole church to buy in and to grow together. So those are two areas that I wanted to share, and I'm going to let, pass over to Pastor Don to share about kind of our community connections and our outreach.
Thank you, John. One of the areas of great focus in this past year has been our intentionality toward, even in the pandemic, involving the community and who we are as a church. We have been intentional to reimagine. So one of the first things we began to think about was our Wednesday evening fellowship meal. Though we can't meet together in the fellowship hall, how could we reimagine that in a season of pandemic so that it would be a blessing, a continued blessing for our church and our community? And so we prayed about it, we had discussion around it, and we had an idea, a reimagining of that ministry so that the groups could still come together. They could cook, they could have the fellowship, the camaraderie, and they could also share in the mission of the church. And so one of the most successful things about this pandemic, one of the things that I count as one of the most successful parts of our church ministry, has been our Wednesday evening outreach meal. The groups that came to cook, the incredible spirit of hospitality and welcome, the willingness to do so is also an opportunity to raise a little funds for your group because that was supported by some gifts from individuals to do so. It was not a completely free meal. Every Wednesday night, we had a bucket out there, and to our surprise, we always exceeded. In those love offerings, the gifts that were given exceeded the cost of the meal. So the folk in the community were making some personal investment in what that meal looked like. But the interchange, the exchange, it took place in the parking lot. I looked forward to every Wednesday night coming because we had people who were regulars who looked for us in that parking lot. It wasn't just us giving them food. It was an opportunity to interact with others in the community and see the church beyond the four walls of the church. And so one of the things that always was amazing to me, we would go out on the street and wave at people, and people would roll their window down, and they'd say, so what's the catch? Like, what are you going to ask me to do to get this food? We're not going to ask you to do anything. There's no gimmick. We just want to show you that we love you in this difficult time, and we're praying for you. And so we began to build a community, people coming on Wednesdays. And then we had the idea of sharing dreams and ideas and praying for individuals, and we had the dream tent. And we had a whiteboard out there with markers, and we would invite people when they came through, what are some of your dreams for the community? What would you like to see happen? Oh, we'd love to be a part of a community garden, or we need more safe areas for children and families to be, to play. We would love, we remember once this church used to do movies on the lawn. We would love to see that return, movies on the lawn. So these are people speaking into our lives about the past. We had no idea about movies on the lawn, but people who came through remembered movies on the lawn. And so we began to have fellowship and hear their stories, and they began to share with us their prayer concerns. And one family drove through one evening and said to me, pray for us because we're looking for a place for our church to meet. We were meeting in a Baptist church that closed during the pandemic, and so we're paying a lot of money to meet in a hotel room every week. And we desperately need a place to meet. They spoke Spanish. I speak Spanish. We had a wonderful exchange in the parking lot. Lo and behold, it's the home church of the young lady who cleans our church, Kurani. And so there was a connection there, and I've met with the pastor. They desperately long to have a place to worship. He grew up in Dominican Republic in the Methodist church. Our theology is aligned. So the moment I met this person, we had an instant connection and just the potential of hope of them being able to have a space someday to gather and have worship. So what we see God doing in that reimagined Wednesday evening meal has been incredible. So some of the things we're looking at in our community connections through that Wednesday evening meal is a community garden. So down on the soccer field, we have space. David Glass, who is our soccer field expert, stepped that off and helped us imagine and realize there's plenty of space down there. Lynn Eastwood has been involved. We have VSU involved. I think the county, some parts of the county has gotten involved in this conversation. So VSU will be donating plants, and so there's an excitement around this community garden. And this was an idea birthed out of some outreach on Wednesday evenings for us to have a space to have shared fruits and vegetables for people to be on the property, for us to be active in the lives of those individuals, sharing cultures, understanding each other's cultures. And the dream is we would have fresh fruits and vegetables to share on Wednesday nights when the meals are cooked. So it goes full circle in that outreach ministry. Also, one of the things that's transpired is with our soccer ministry at Bensley, David and Sarah have shared that they're not going to be meeting at Bensley Park for the school program of the soccer program that met there. So we're going to move all that to Beulah Soccer Field. So we'll have the activity of that ministry back on the soccer field in partnership with the community garden. So we see a lot of potential there. All the wood for the community garden is being delivered on May the 24th. And I think the dirt and everything is in the process as well of coming. So our dream would be that we continue to have a community connection where we're engaging with people. And some people have asked, well, if we're able to eat again, does that mean we're not doing the Wednesday evening meals? That's not what we're saying. What we're saying is we'd love to partner the Wednesday evening meal, both for a time of fellowship in the social hall. and a ministry on the parking lot. So that's something we've been able to connect with during the pandemic. That's been a beautiful opportunity of ministry. So our hoped for community connection is using the time that we've had to reimagine who we are as a church and being more mindful and open to the Holy Spirit about ideas around current ministries and what those ministries could look like in the future. So just three ideas, three work areas is inclusive discipleship. So on Wednesday evenings, we're doing incredible discipleship journey together. We have about 60 to 80 people engaged on Wednesday evenings when we did our videos. How do we translate that into a Sunday morning, Sunday school time? How do we translate that into sermon series so that we have the whole church learning together and moving forward in discipleship? Now, as John said, your Sunday school class may decide, hey, we don't want to do that this time. We want to pick our own curriculum, but at least we would offer you the opportunity that we all journey together in the same discipleship formation. Worship, worship is a key part of who we are. Statistically, we know that post pandemic, the word is half of those who have not attended worship will not come back to worship. So a year, year and a half removed from sort of a routine of worshiping together, it's going to look very different post pandemic. How are we engaged? How are we prepared to meet that reality as a church? How are we building worship opportunities for all those who may not be able to make it back post pandemic? Is that really where we're, you know, sending our, spending our efforts and our, our time in connecting and worship, which is critical? And then third, our community outreach. These are sort of just beginnings of what we see the vision to look like in three specific areas. Worship, discipleship and outreach. So that's sort of our presentation for the evening. We, we have worked together with a small group of people, a dream team who sort of heard this out a couple of weeks ago, who thought it was wonderful that we have a plan for the future. Now, some of you may come, have come this evening thinking this is the conversation around where we as a United Methodist Church are heading. So, you know, we can answer those kinds of questions as well. There's not a lot of information about what that looks like, but we can also help unpack some of those questions if you have some of those questions. So I think we can, if you have questions, comments, concerns, whatever you may have this evening. So our Buella Day celebration on Sunday is going to be us scripturally through a sermon, sort of helping unpack this. What does it look like to be a people who worship together scripturally? What does it look like to be a people who are discipled together and growing in faith? What does it look like to be a people who know that we're called to serve others? And what does it look like? How are we serving others? So what does that vision look like for us in discipleship, worship and service? So that's sort of our Buella Day celebration is going to be around the idea of what now? Where do we go from here? How do we worship together? How do we serve together? How are we being discipled together? As I said, this on hold time for the pandemic has given us an opportunity to sort of reimagine what all that looks like. And we want to invite the church to capture that vision, to ask questions about that vision and to get on board with the ideas. And maybe even have some ideas that you shared with us this evening that we aren't aware of. So I think that's about what we have to offer and we want to be available for questions. If anybody would have questions or comments in support of, or you have maybe areas of concern that we haven't thought of, or maybe you're just completely confused about what this whole evening is going to be about and you want to voice that opinion. So if anybody has any questions, you can come to one of the mics here and we'll hopefully answer those questions. Or if you stand up where you are and speak loudly, we may be able to hear you. Susan.
Can you come to a mic? If you don't speak in a mic, then people on Zoom can't hear you.
This is true.
Hi, Susan Noel here, and I have observation and this has been something I've been observing for the years I've been here, which is one week less than Pastor Don. And actually, looking at the website for Pastor John's new assignment, I saw where they were hitting an area that I think this church maybe doesn't see. And that is the middle agers, working adult and the empty nesters. These are the people who mostly are working during the daytime. They can't come to the daytime meetings. They would love to be involved. They love connection. Their children are grown, they're gone, they're available, they're income producing adults. And it's just hard to fit in. You can come on Sunday mornings, but you know, you can't go to the United Methodist Women, you can't help fix the Wednesday meals. And that's an observation. I see this large group out there wanting connection. I'm one of them. And it's very limited. We have choir practice at night. That's something of the new art studio and writing. That's something. But everything else, it's kind of like, well, I, I can't participate. And that's an observation. And I hope with your new church, that empty nesters group I saw on there, that maybe they found a solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. I think that's a good point and, and it's a good observation and it's, it's, and I think in this season of sort of imagining and reimagining, it's good to identify areas that we haven't addressed. So how could we in this, in this new season, develop a ministry for those just like yourself that you described, who would want to be involved in circle? Can't come, can't come to a daytime Bible study. You know, there are limited things offered in the evening, but how could we be a ministry to that population of people or with that population of people? That's a very good observation.
Diane asks over Zoom, when will we start having the eight thirty service again?
Yeah, well, that's a very good question. I think all of our emphasis has been on just able, being able to provide a service and an in-person service and moving in that reality and trying to determine all those logistics. There has been some conversation, a couple of weeks ago, I was met by two ladies in the kitchen who said, so why aren't we having eight thirty service? So it's a little difficult to provide both services. In the season of pandemic, that's not something we've had a lot of conversation about. I think we, as I said, are just trying to work really hard to be able to provide the in-person at 11 o'clock. That's a very good question. So I would say at this point, we don't have an answer to that. Yes, Bonnie. Yes, there is a plan to consider it. Yes. There's a plan to consider it. She said, is there a plan to consider it after the pandemic? Yes. Excuse me? Okay.
Just a reminder, please go to the microphones because people on Zoom cannot hear you.
She said she supports that plan.
Um, I'm wondering, first, are we getting a new associate? And second, will you continue with the contemporary service?
Yes, we are getting a new associate. John will be farewelling on the 27th of June and we will be receiving a new associate. That new associate cannot be officially announced by name until after the bishop and the board approve that appointment fully. So that will probably be the last Sunday in May that we'll be able to announce who's coming to Buella. We have interviewed him. The staff pastor parish has interviewed him. We've had to meet your pastor. So we are receiving a new full-time associate pastor and we will be announcing that probably the last Sunday in May after we get approval for that. And your second question was the Wellspring service? That has not yet been decided. We, well.
I could speak to that. Yeah.
Go ahead and speak to that.
So the, the Wellspring service, as you know, like all of our services had to be on hold and look different during the pandemic. When the pandemic hit, that hit many of our young adults very, very hard. So much so that there was, it was very hard to connect with them in any sort of form or fashion. Many of them lost jobs. Many of them had to move. It was a very, very traumatic time. And so they couldn't even think or put any energy towards service. In the fall, we started to gather some of them back to do videos, to record for online, to do videos for Sunday mornings or for online worship, things like that. And just recently, a lot of them have started to come back, especially with Zach coming on board and working with our, our band. I will say, a lot of them cannot commit to more than once a month due to work, family, kids, all those sorts of things. So right now, it's not really realistic for us to ask them to do a weekly service, which is why during the pandemic, we've been focusing on a backyard worship service. How many of you have heard of the backyard worship service? You've seen it promoted. That's been an opportunity for our youth, for a lot of our young adults and for a lot of our families to come together and worship in sort of a communal style, to share together questions and thoughts and worship. And Gabe could probably speak to this more, but it's been a really great chance for our youth to engage in worship because not many of our youth are here Sunday mornings and it's a way for them to, to connect and to worship as well. So right now, where that ministry is at is a once a month backyard worship service as hosted by a couple of our families. And some of those have stepped up in leadership, not just to host, but to teach. And we're hoping with a new associate pastor that can give support to that and help that continue to grow. So that's kind of where, where it's at.
So there, you know, there's no formal plan for Wellspring to initiate, you know, we begin next Sunday with the worship service. So we want to monitor, get our new associate in, continue to have backyard worship once a month through the summer months and then determine what that's going to look like in the fall. Thank you, Marcia. That's a good question. Yes, Joanne.
I would assume that at this point, we're not considering any type of a vacation Bible school thing. But are we, do you have any ideas to reach out to children?
So she had a question around vacation Bible school. At this point, do we have any plan for vacation Bible school? And if not, is there any plan to reach out to children in the community? We've had some limited conversation around vacation Bible school there. Again, it's all to be determined by the winds and the hows of how many can gather, how many can't gather and the social distancing, which was a nightmare. So we weren't able to have vacation Bible school at all. There are options that we've had conversation around, like events, video, videoed events that children could log into from home and participate in that way. So we don't, we really haven't made a decision about what that would look like. Thankfully, hopefully, with some movement on the front of some things being lifted as far as restrictions. If we had that soon enough, we could plan. I know one of the conversations that I had was with Karen was like a one day, could we do a one day vacation Bible school event? Where we would promote it perhaps and even do it as late as August so that we could do a one day event for vacation Bible school. So we have a lot of conversation around a lot of ministry opportunities that have been very limited. For, you know, but we can't really make a decision until we know what will happen because we're limited by space and amount of people and but I know in my former appointment, we did vacation Bible school in a one day event before and it worked very well. So I think there's a, there's a couple of options that we could, that we're looking at that could, that could work. But we hopefully going to have more clarity as we move into the first weeks of June and then can make our decision there. Like we just got word this week that we can host for the, the month of August, the Rise Against Hunger because they're allowed by square footage. So many people prefer square foot. And we met that guideline. So we can host a Rise Against Hunger for this summer. So that's good news. So we're, as each little bit of hope and each opportunity for ministry, we're hoping that we can provide something, an opportunity. Anybody else have a question? Yes, Jean. We have to have you come to a mic, Tony. People on Zoom can't hear you. We'll let you do a solo. Here you go.
Thank you. All through this pandemic, I'm one of those people who have been alone, totally alone. I don't have any family in the area. I don't even really have that many friends because I'm a loner. And I'm wondering if there is something in place or can be put in place for people like me who is widowed or a widower or single and older. I don't care about the contemporary music. I'm glad they've got it for the young people. I'm just curious. Is there anything in place for people like me? Who like to be around people? Who like to cook, who like to share meals? And like I said, I have been totally alone. My family's in Tennessee. Thank God for my mother-in-law who's been a good source of strength for me. And thank God for this church. And I know that you all have seen me trotting up here to the church to visit with you all every once in a while because I'm so danged lonely. Is there going to be anything in place for people like me?
Good question, Tony, and thank you for all the times you trot up here and visit us. We appreciate that. I know that in the past year, we threw a vision that Suzanne had. It was a creation, it was a ministry for creative people and writers and artistic people. And I think you participated some in that. And that was a brand new vision and mission for the season of pandemic. And our Wednesday evening meals, we've appreciated you coming out, Tony, and sharing your expertise as a chef on cooking some of those meals and sharing that time. And I think there again, I think we have a pat answer, but we've tried to be creative in ideas through the pandemic. But as we open up and have more opportunity for gathering and fellowship, I think one of the things that we need to be mindful of and intentional to do is to create space for individuals like yourself to be in fellowship and to be engaged, whether it's a small group time, whether it's a shared meal together and make sure that if we do have those activities available, that we're not just announcing it to the same people who always attend, but that we have connection with all people of the church so they know what's available in ministry. So I think one of the things we can do is be mindful, as we did for Susan, that there's a population of people that may be missed. And that's one of the reasons we want to be intentional about updating our worship opportunities because we don't want to leave anyone out from the opportunity to worship. If you can't make it to church, we want you to have access to full worship. So as we do with the age group of people that Susan mentioned, we need to be also intentional, not just mindful, but intentional to create specific space for people to connect and belong. And, and we're taking notes on all of these conversations. So hopefully, you know, creating ways such as the Creator Studio, but we can also be mindful to continue to be open to new spaces and opportunities. And one of the things I would also encourage you to do, because you do trot up here and spend time with us and is to share those ideas when you come, you know, let us know, hey, I feel disconnected and is there something we can do together to make sure that there's a space for people just like me? I enjoy you trotting up here to the church. So I would also enjoy you sharing all your thoughts with us too about what that looks like. Because I'm, I don't have that unique perspective of being a widow and being alone. So it's wonderful to share that, that new perspective so that we're all mindful of where you're coming from. Thank you, Tony. I think Jean had a question.
Is there any word on when we can sing and worship again?
So we have been singing and worship for the past two weeks.
I've been out of town for the past two weeks and I missed it. I have really missed that.
Two weeks ago, we were able to sing and worship. I think it's been two weeks ago. Two weeks ago, we're able, we made the announcement to be able to sing and worship and it's been absolutely wonderful. To me, it's been life-giving. So there again, we're able to sing and worship now. We're able to have individuals lead us in worship in groups of up to four people. The men's quartet will be singing on Sunday. For that, we're very thankful of. And then hopefully, as the restrictions are lifted, we can get the choir back in place. Talked with Zach today and, and there's going to hopefully be a call meeting of the choir soon to begin to talk about. to begin to talk about what will you do, and we are able to sing, what kind of music, and what people feel comfortable with. So we are singing in church, we're going to sing Buell Land on Sunday morning for Buell Day. So get your lungs ready for that. That is, you know, exciting news, and we're only hoping it to be better as the weeks roll on.
What kind of news?
Is everybody aware that we're able to sing and worship?
It's some kind of news.
That's a, that's a spot of good news.
I didn't catch a word.
Anybody else have a question? A comment?
Well, sorry, I hadn't said something.
No other questions or comments? Can you come to the microphone?
Sunday School will be the same time period, 9:45.
I'll let John speak to Sunday School, he's been working diligently on Sunday School.
Yes, so 9:45 works, but it really is up to the groups. If you want to get here at 9:30, you can get here at 9:30, whenever we open the building, and it's open and available to you is when you can meet. Really beforehand, it was kind of restrict, we were limited, because we had 8:30 service, Sunday School, and 11 o'clock. So really, whenever you want to meet and the doors are open, whether that's 9:30, 9:45, or 10 o'clock, we just ask that you wrap up your Sunday School, just so you can make it over for 11 o'clock worship.
And also, it doesn't have to be Sunday morning.
Right.
So we've had a couple of Sunday School classes meeting during the week. We've had one Sunday School class who's met the whole pandemic on Sunday morning in the fellowship hall, because they say we want to meet, so we provided the space for them. It's a small group of people. Some met on Tuesdays, one class met on Tuesdays here in the fellowship hall. And so the information that's been sent out to each of the Sunday School leaders has been, you're able to meet, just let us know when, where, how many. And some of those people have already responded back and said, we're not meeting until September. So some of the class leaders have already spoken and said, we want to regain our class numbers by the fall. A lot of people will be traveling for vacation, so we don't see any need to gather for the summer, but we want to have a focused, you know, energy on the fall and starting in September. So some of the classrooms that are, some of the groups that have been larger groups, we just invited those leaders to think about different spaces. So if the Crusaders in fact want to meet, we're going to invite them to be in the fellowship hall. So some of the classrooms have changed, but most of them will stay the same. So if you haven't heard anything about your Sunday School class, you probably want to speak to your Sunday School leader, because we have been in contact with them for a couple of weeks. And we actually sent out a poll and asked everybody, will you meet? When will you meet? How will you meet? And then we also just sent out information this week around, you know, let us know what your thoughts are, because we're ordering curriculum for all the Sunday School classes who choose to use that same curriculum. Susan, can you come to the mic?
I would just like to take a second to say thank you to our staff. I think with all the frustration, all the difficulties, all the family turmoil that they've been dealing with in their personal lives, I think they have done an amazing job. And I would like to say a nice good thanks.
Thank you. So some of you, maybe not of you in this room, and I won't call any names, thought that this conversation would be about where we're heading as the United Methodist Church. So I just want to make it, take a, since, are there any other questions before we address this? So prior to the global pandemic, there was a decision to be made last year. Because of the pandemic, it was moved to this year. Unfortunately, it got postponed again to 2022, and it looks like that may not happen in 2022. It could be 2024, 2025. So as far as what happens with the United Methodist Church globally, because of the pandemic, that is all on hold. But what I would encourage us to do at the local level is to remain faithful, to understand our commission to be faithful disciples of Jesus Christ, to serve one another, to serve our community. And this is sort of what this idea around a post-pandemic vision looks like for us at Buell. There is no conversation to be had really about a vote, or where we'll move as a church in the future. That is yet to be decided. Unfortunately, we are a, fortunately and unfortunately, we are a global church. And because we would like everyone to have a voice in that conversation, we're limited by the pandemic. We can't gather the masses of 20,000 people, 40,000 people. And unfortunately, because of the far reaches of our church, there are people who don't have adequate access to internet for Zoom meetings. And so if we can't have the full voice and the vote of the church, we've been asked to just prayerfully consider that on hold for the time being. So that's where we'll be, on hold and faithfully serving God together. Anybody else have any questions? Concerns? So where we move to from this point is just a focused, a focus on our discipleship journey together. How we worship and what that looks like has not yet all been decided. Whether we worship, you know, what the worship for Wellspring looks like, or what the worship for 8:30 looks like, what the worship service for 11 o'clock looks like, those are all growing areas and edges. And we are mindful and prayerfully discerning and praying about that, and sort of vision casting about what we think will happen. But from this point of view, we don't know, so we're going to continue to do what we do know. As far as our outreach, we're excited about planning a movie night in the month of June and inviting the community to come, be on the soccer field, be in fellowship together, looking at what Sunday School looks like. I'm excited that so many people are excited about Sunday School and wanting to gather again. So get with your teacher. If you have not heard from your leader, your class leader, you need to give them a phone call or an email and say, hey, we can meet, you know, what's our plan? And put some fire under those people, so that we can get our Sunday School ministry up and going. We're prepared as a staff, and we're just waiting for the response of each class. And I'm thankful for Phil and Suzanne and Gabe and John and Zach. As many of you all know, we said in the beginning, it's been a tough year. But it's because of the faithfulness of God, and the faithfulness of this church, that we have been more than overcomers. I've had multiple conversations with pastors who, whose church just quit. I mean, they've closed the doors since last March and have done nothing. And it's a difficult place to be. So thank you all for your willingness to be faithful when times were hard, and we didn't know where we were going for sure, but we knew God was guiding us. And I think we're in store for better days. Would you all agree? We're in store for better days, and thank you for your faithfulness and giving. I would have to dare say that I'm human. In my first response to the global pandemic and the email that I received from the bishop that we had to not, I couldn't gather for worship anymore, my first thought was, what's going to happen to our tithing, our offerings, and our giving to our church? Then I began to think about each one of our staff people, and I thought, what are we going to do? What if, what if we can't weather this storm and we, we, all these people's lives are in jeopardy? But thanks be to God, God gave me the moment of peace to say, I'm in control, don't worry. And you all have been faithful, 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 and God is good. So thank you for your faithfulness. Yes, Robin? Go to the mic.
I just want to say that I am really excited about everything that you've been talking about. This church, it has so much love in it. I mean, from the very first time that I walked in the door, I knew this was home. And I thank you all for that. And I hope and pray that through the things that we are doing in the coming months, in the coming year, that that love is going to spread much farther throughout our community. And this isn't going to be the end either, is it?
Nope.
Because as we meet these new people and have conversations and make disciples of them, we're going to have more people coming in, more new ideas, more hands that will help, and everything God provides. So if we all just pray, God will provide every resource that we need to accomplish what He has chosen for us to do.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. And I, and I want to say to you two, I have an open-door policy, John. We, ideas, like, I mean, Joanne, the question about vacation Bible school. Ask, you know, ask us, come to us and say, because there's a lot of stuff that happens in our church ministry. If you've ever volunteered here for a day, you know, it's easy to get lost in all the minutia and the busyness of the day. Ask us about the 8:30 service, ask about vacation Bible school. Those are not, you know, inter-office secrets. That's who we are in the life of the church. So we need to be mindful that that's where your hearts are. Your hearts are interested in what Sunday School looks like. Your hearts are interested, will there be ministry for our children this summer? You know, our hearts are, will there be an opportunity for us to do any kind of ministry with Rise Against Hunger? So those, those are important questions, and it's, those are not private, inter-office conversations. That's the life of this church. So if it's on your heart to want to know, call. If it's on your heart to want to know, come by the truck, meet Tony in the parking lot, and you all trot in here together. Right? And so I just want to make sure that we're, we're all, we have an understanding that anything that is about the life of the church is to be a part of a, it's an open opportunity for conversation. There's nothing to be hidden, no secrets to be had. So if there's some burning question on your heart about where do we go for two from here, please ask the question. We've had conversation about vacation Bible school, but in my mind, it got moved here. But you bringing it up again tonight made me think, huh, we need to be in conversation about vacation Bible school like tomorrow. So that's important. That's the beauty of more than one mind working together. Anybody else have any questions or concerns or comments? No? How wonderful. I'm hoping that you did not come and you're leaving disappointed. This was an opportunity for us to just gather the resources and be on the same page and have an opportunity for questions and answers, and to maybe voice your opinion about what's happened over the past year. Thank you all for being flexible with us. As we learned about all the guidelines and put them into practice, there may have been some Sundays that we seemed grumpy. And perhaps we were grumpy, because there was a lot of things to get in place. But thank you for your flexibility and your willingness not to give up on us, but to continue to forge together in what it means to be kingdom builders. Amen? John, with no other questions, will you close this? Does anybody have any questions online? Zach, I mean, Gabe? Nope?
I think the word for us tonight is opportunity. Previously, before the pandemic, there was a lot of reasons to say no to things, and we have the opportunity to say yes. So if you've got ideas, if you've got thoughts, as Pastor Don said, those are opportunities. A year ago, we didn't imagine we'd worship online, or we'd have a dog park ministry, or we worship in backyards, or that we'd serve meals in the parking lot, or that we'd have a community garden. But God's open doors. We give God thanks for that. Could you join me in a word of prayer? Mighty God, we give you thanks for the powerful ways that you move and the ways that you've moved through this community. We give you thanks for your Holy Spirit that's been poured out upon each of us tonight, not just staff and pastors, but on every individual who's here. And God, those who aren't here, those who are on Zoom, those who are at home, God, you are stirring in hearts and lives in this very community. God, we ask that you wouldn't bless these plans because they're ours. We ask that you would bless them if they're faithful to you, if they honor you, if they serve you, and if they build your kingdom. God, help us to continue to pray for opportunities to serve, to be a witness, to grow, and to share your love. God, transform us and help us be of one heart, of one mind, and one soul, so that we can be one body unified in Christ Jesus. We lift this up and pray this in the name of Jesus. Amen.